Roll call, please.
Here.
Jesse Marquez.
Here.
Jesse Diaz-Silka. Vice President McAvoy.
President.
President Lawson.
I'm here. So, thank you. Welcome, everybody. This is our final board meeting of the 2019-2020 school year. So, thanks for joining us. I just posted some links in the chat to the agenda and the Google Doc. If you would like to speak to the board, please go ahead and fill that out. Make sure you put your name that you're using as you log in so that we know who to unmute when the time comes. If the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. And due to the Brown Act, the board is allowed to hear your comments, but we cannot have a discussion on it. If the item you wish to address is on the agenda, you'll be called on when that item is being addressed. Public comments are limited to two minutes per person. And just a reminder that because we're meeting via teleconference, all votes will be by roll call. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I had... Did someone else speak? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dennis. I'll go after you.
So, I had a question. Could we move 10-3, 10-4, and 10-5?
You can.
10-5's... Yeah, 10-5's the one that given us a policy maybe we don't want to.
I'd like to move it up a bit because under COVID-19, under the discussion, I'd like to also move it there. So Wendy can talk a little bit about it.
Okay.
And then, but you're going to have to make... It's still going to have to be an action item because it is a policy.
So, I'm sorry, Dr. Baker, where do you want to move it to?
I'd like to move it to the... Under the COVID-19 because it's related to the distance learning.
Okay.
So that Wendy can, you know, give you more information about it.
Okay. And then you... Dennis would like to... 10-3 and 10-4 to move under consent?
Correct.
That works for me. I was going to make those same suggestions. That's great.
Okay. Cecilia, are you okay with that? If there's no other changes, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Lisa and Dennis, roll call vote, please.
Jesse McBride.
Aye.
Jesse Marquez.
Aye.
Jesse Diaz-Silka.
She had to... She had to pop back into work, so she'll be back later.
Vice President McAvoy.
Yes.
President Lawson.
Aye.
Okay. We do not have any comment cards under oral communication, so we're moving on to the bond program. We'll still hear with this. It's just consent. We have no items under action. Is there a motion to approve?
Tomo.
Cecilia.
Second.
Lisa, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Jesse McBride.
Aye.
Jesse Marquez.
Aye.
Jesse Diaz-Silka. Vice President McAvoy.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Will.
Thank you, guys.
Joining us for a few minutes. Good to see you. So, we're moving on to item 8.1, discussion on COVID.
Evening, everyone. So, tonight what we're going to do is just give you an overview of what we have been doing over the past week since we last met. And so, first off, you know, we met with principals who came back to a meeting early on Monday, if I'm not mistaken, to meet with cabinet. And we wanted to start their year with some information. And so, one of the things that we talked about was definitely as you were each given information when we had our individual meetings on the TK and the K teachers', you know, request. So, that was an item that was discussed at length. And so...
Excuse me, Dr. Baker. Could you explain for the audience what the request was?
Yeah, let me get there.
Okay, sorry.
So, as we were working with... On the agenda, going through the agenda with the principals, we explained what the ask was. And the ask came from teachers at one of our school sites who are the kindergarten teachers. And they have had a history of meeting with their kindergarten teacher... With their kindergarten teachers meeting with their students for about an hour at a time. And the child is there with the teacher, and the parent is also in the room. So, they were very concerned that with the distance learning, there would not be any real face-to-face time. And so, it was brought to my attention and to Liz Wolf's attention, and we spoke about it. And I decided to go in the direction of allowing teachers, the TK or the K teachers, to do something similar. So, at this school, Henry Ford, as Janet, you're well aware of this item that they do, the K teachers do every year, of meeting their students individually and then also talking to the parents. And at some time during this meeting, they also do a little bit of assessment, from what I understand. So, they wanted to do that again, and so I said yes. But what I want also to do is for other TK and K teachers to do something similar, whether it be person-to-person, face-to-face, or whether it be virtually, that they meet with the child and the parent, do expectations, what they're going to go over through school year, and how they can really connect with one another. Because distance learning this year is different. It's very different than what it was in the spring. So, with that being said, we had that conversation with the principals. And so, now I know Liz is working with the principals, and they're supposed to let us know what each school... What that's going to look like for each school. And then, I know now... I know many of you board members were on a call today about COVID-19 in San Mateo County. So, if we go on the watch list, I don't know what happens, to be perfectly honest with you. If we go on the watch list, like...
We're actually on the watch list. It's just that we have three days to get off the watch list.
So, I guess.
And the businesses who are impacted most severely have a kind of a three-day warning. So, and it doesn't look likely. I mean, it looks likely that we'll be on the watch list, so.
Right. If we're still on it as of 12:01 a.m. on August 1st, then all of the businesses that are impacted will have to close, and that includes distance learning for schools.
So...
In-person learning.
If we're still on the watch list.
Right. There's no in-person learning.
Right. Yes. That's what I was trying to say. Thank you.
I don't know what... So, if that occurs at 12:01 on Saturday morning, then I think that probably puts a wrench into what the teacher would want to do.
So, what we can do is you can ask for waivers from Dr. Scott Murrow.
And is Dr. Scott Murrow going to give them to us?
Yes. He actually already said he's giving out waivers. Yep.
All right.
He said that, what, the week before, I think, that all of us were on a call. So, I think if we described the waiver we're interested in and we're following all the protocols, I believe you would allow it.
Okay. So, what I would need to know then, and that Liz and I would need to make sure that we have the exact procedures for each school site and what that's going to look like, and then we can move forward. But the kindergarten teachers and the TK teachers are very concerned, definitely, about not having some type of face-to-face contact with their students because they're coming to school for the first time. And normally, it's a really exciting time with your teacher, new friends, and so forth. And then also, what this will give us is the opportunity to give them their iPads because that's one of the items that, you know, we'll be talking about a little later. The iPads will be given out to our preschool, our TK, our K, and our first-grade students this year. So, that would be really exciting. So, the parents will be able to have that conversation with the teacher also and what to look for, and different apps that the students will be using. So, that's one item that was on the principal agenda. The other item that we talked about at length, and that I know Liz also spoke with principals in regarding to the learning pods. And I know we've been getting emails about this. And with that being said, we are looking at this point-in-time class list, and many class lists have already been made. And so, what some schools are doing right now, I'll use the example of Roy Cloud. And I know Clifford is doing it too, where they're sending out an email or a survey to parents where they have to indicate, are they coming back? Are they not coming back? Are they interested... Or maybe they're interested in the independent study, homeschooling. We don't know yet. So, they want to get a true number of students that are coming back per grade level, and then look at the list that they already made. In regard to the list they already made, you have to understand that when one is an administrator, a society administrator, and you're working with your teachers, you are hoping for to make a diverse class. So, that by diverse class, it's a mixture of, you know, boys and girls, of course. And then you want to have a mixture of those students who are RSP students, who are in special ed. You also want a mixture of those who are socioeconomic, that we have a mixture of students in that class too, a mixture of those students who are ELs, and a mixture of students who speak other languages. So, in that sense, some of the classes are already quite diverse. So, they want to see how that works out before they start meeting with parents about the pods. And because they want to keep their diversity in each of their classrooms. So, that is coming, and the principals are working on it right now. And they're going to see how diverse their classes are, and then depending on what the request is, does it somehow skew that diversity? And if it does, it's going to be very difficult for a principal to go in that direction. So, I just wanted you to know that right now and for all board members to know that. Remember, it's always our intention to have a diverse classroom when it comes to socioeconomic, English language learners, those students who are in special ed, those students who speak another language, and also students who are, as they progress through the grade level, are at different levels. They're not all just at one level. So, just take that into mind. So, we talked about that.
Doctor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, so I think all that sounds great with the diverse classes. I mean, I know that we, you know, I know that teachers and staff spend a lot of time putting together the class list and really thinking about kind of optimum education and teaching and learning that goes on in the class. So, that's great. I know one of the requests has been, and I know you're working on this, so I just want to clarify, that once we know who's coming, we have the class list, we'll get those out to people. And I believe another part of the process is, are they asking parents and guardians if it's okay to share the information? Because I know once those lists are out, I think there's some families who may then want to try to put together learning or social pods, that sort of thing. So, I don't know the timing of that. If you know that now, I know we're getting a lot of emails about that particular question.
That's a really good question because we would have... And I'm sure that Cloud and Clifford have sent their information out now. And maybe Liz, you could help me with this because I know you went to some other discussions, and so did Linda. We didn't... From the survey and the questionnaire that I viewed, it didn't say anything if we could share your name or we could share the list. It did not say anything like that. So, that could be problematic for those schools that have already sent that out.
So, Dr. Baker, the Power School registration that parents do every year, that to make sure all the information is updated, it does have questions about opting out of sharing information. I know it was about sharing information with the PTA, PTO, but I think class lists were on there also.
Did you complete yours already, Janet? Did you complete yours already?
Ed.
All right, good. So, what we have to do is we would have to go through each school, each of the schools, and determine which of those parents didn't want to have their information shared and make sure.
I don't know for sure if the question was specific to sharing class information. Linda, you're not.
It's usually the directory information that goes to the PTA, PTO, so then they can send it out, right, to their community. But you're right, parents have to get permission for that. But it should act as the same. I just don't know if the timing works.
Yeah, I would look at the board policy also because it was something that we had to approve just for a lot of terms. But I would start there.
Okay, so we should...
Good point. Thank you.
That is... That's really important because if there is a name of a child that is definitely distributed, and the parent said no on Power School, then we really need to abide by that. That's a good point. Lisa, I forgot all about that. Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll add that. Another list of to-dos.
That's another thing we have to check on. So, I'll check on that tomorrow with the registration people to see where we are with it. Let's see. I'm just reading down here. We had a lot of discussions in regard to accountability and what that's going to look like this year, and what the expectation is for principals to be monitoring what's happening during distance learning with the children and the teachers. And so, we'll be spending some more time on that in the near future with the principals. We came up... Coming up with a checklist for them to view and then for us to get some more feedback from them. And then... And then it went on to several other items with Liz and some of the other cabinet members. And I know, Liz, do you want to elaborate on any of those items that took place with the principals?
Sure. I'd be happy to talk a little bit about the guides that we're preparing. Do you want me to do that?
Sure.
I think I mentioned these last week, and they're not ready for distribution yet. But when they are, we will certainly be sharing them with you as well. We are starting to think about what are the pieces of information that we can kind of finalize. And we're starting to push some of that out to our staff. And so, some of that's going out in newsletters. But we are compiling a lot of information into one document that we hope is a useful document for distance learning for all of the staff. So, in this document, so these were some of the things that we showed the very rough drafts to the administrators to get their feedback about, is it helpful? What else is needed? You know, that kind of thing. And then we'll be starting to share it out a little bit more broadly with the staff as well before we finalize them because we really want to have it be a collaborative process and hear the voices of the people who are involved. But in this document, we're really focusing on one place to go for the staff to find information about excellent distance learning. So, there's a number of resources that are located in it. We originally had thought about it as kind of a plan for the new teachers so they could find information about curriculum. But then it has grown because we realized that all of our teachers need as up-to-date information as possible about resources and the different units and the different things I'm going to talk to you about that are being prepared. So, in this document, which is now about 35 pages long, we started off as three, there's information about, you know, who to call when you have a question, you know, so just some basic information about that. But there's a lot of links in this document now to the curriculum units that are being designed by the staff development team that's also working in collaboration with many of our teachers. So, there will be beginning-of-the-year units that are optional. People don't have to use them, but we think they'll be very useful for teachers as they get started, that in the first two to three weeks of school, that have a focus on community building, social-emotional learning, welcome back, we've missed you, you know. So, there's a lot of that for each grade level that is also linked to the different platforms and the different apps that teachers can start... If they haven't used them in the past, they can start getting used to them in kind of a friendlier way rather than starting right off with page one of the curriculum, as well as helping the students become more accustomed to using their new devices and using their new applications in kind of a more fun, community-building kind of a way. So, that's being developed, and those are going to be shared with the staff. There are also links in this document to the curriculum resources for all the curriculum. A lot of the curriculum is online, so they would be able to find it quickly through this document, as well as the additional links for Spanish resources and Mandarin resources. And these would be links and information that could be shared with the parents who have asked us for this kind of support as well. So, that will all be in one place. We also, of course, are linking to the technology and as much information as possible without being overwhelming because there is so much technology and so many resources out there that this is a kind of a curated list about the applications that are most useful. And that will be in this document as well. A lot of information about social-emotional support, who to call if they're worried about their students, about the families, what other resources would be available for them. So, we have a lot of really good supports that we're compiling, and it's kind of, as I said, it's a growing list. But one of the most important things that we're putting in here is guidance around scheduling. And so, we had a conversation about scheduling on Monday and some recommendations around that. And then now what Linda and I are doing at the end of this week and the beginning of next week is we're meeting with each school individually and talking to them specifically about their schedules because this is probably the biggest item. It's connected to the social pod, so you're hearing about that as parents ask about what class for their children be in and what their schedule be. That's a very big deal to the teachers, of course, as well. And so, the schedules haven't been determined yet because we're really looking at what are the best ways for schools to organize their schedule. So, there's a mix of synchronous and asynchronous learning that is all not happening at the same time because there's a number of children in the same family on different schedules. And so, how within a school can they work out synchronous and asynchronous learning so that, you know, there's a balance, not just because of the impact on the devices, but also because of the impact on the kids being able to have breaks and fun activities in between some of their synchronous learning. So, that's probably the biggest challenge is to figure that out right now. And it's certainly the questions that we get all the time, is what's the schedule going to be? And so, I know that the principals are seriously thinking about it. We're getting a lot of emails and calls from them, and then we are meeting individually with them so that they can start to finalize their schedule. A lot of it also has to do with when they know for sure how many students are going to be in the classes and what grade levels they need. Teachers are interested in knowing if they have combination classes, and none of that is set yet, right? So, of course, people are feeling pretty anxious about that. But it is something that we're talking about every day with almost everybody. There's also been a lot of conversation about professional development. And for the staff, some of the professional development will be around the guidance and the materials that are in this kind of playbook. But in addition to that, we're talking a lot about what kind of professional development is needed for the administrators so that they can really successfully lead excellent distance learning, lead and monitor that. And for parents, and so we have a number of people who are working on the professional development for parents and with a particular focus on the B site and how to provide Spanish-language professional development for parents who may have different needs than some of the parents at some of our other schools. And so, we've been talking a lot about that and how to take devices and possibly as an incentive for the parents, if they come, I don't know if they can come anymore. We had originally thought that maybe they can come in really small groups, and we could do a training of trainers, and that they could then take this information back out to their school sites and to their communities. I don't know if we'll be able to do that. We were working with the Parks and Rec and possibly using one of the large screens and having people come socially distanced and do some things together on some devices because not everything can be learned on a webinar or through YouTube. Some people need a person to help them. And so, we were thinking about some alternative ways to do that with the parents. For the administrators, we're also looking at helping ease them into more familiarity with the applications and with the platforms with a training that we are preparing for them for next week, where we're going to help them prepare their back-to-school meeting through the use of some of our platforms and some of the applications. So, it's a practical application of the tools that we're asking the teachers to use. And then our plan for the administrators, when they can think about something other than the first day of school and the scheduling and all the things that they're thinking about, is to do a more intense lesson planning overview for them and have them actually plan some lessons that are synchronous and asynchronous so they can better support the teachers in that as well. We're sending out newsletters. I hope you find the gotchas. They kept coming back to me. So, either you got 1,000 copies of them or maybe you got one. And so, those have started, and we've gotten some good feedback on that. And I already am preparing the one for tomorrow because there's been a lot of questions that have come up. So, I was thinking I'd send these out every other week, and now it's probably going to be daily. But it's helping. It's helping because communication is huge. And so, what we know, we're sharing that information. It's just that there's a lot that we don't know. So, I have also put up a question document that you also got a link to see that as well for teachers to put in their questions. And as they put in their questions, if we can answer them, we will be answering them regularly. And there's already a lot of questions in that document. So, I think that's great. So, it's useful.
Can I ask, is that... So, the newsletters, who are those going out to?
All the teachers.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, okay.
So, they went out to the TK through eighth-grade teachers. So, because this particular newsletter was directed at information for them. We also have an administrator newsletter that has been going out as well, and that has information that's directed to them, right? So, keeping the audiences a little separate.
And then we'll determine how we can do a parent, some type of a parent.
Yes. Yes. And so, that will be part of... So, Jorge is also working on kind of a questionnaire for parents about how, what's the best way for them to get information and what other information do they need in addition to the more traditional, the webinar and the YouTube and that, which reaches many, many people, but it's not reaching everybody. We know that there's 800 of our families that don't have emails, right? So, you know, how do we get to them? They may have YouTube or they may have Facebook, right? But we want to get to everyone, right? So, that's a challenge that we're working on. We're looking also at the device distribution and the materials. I don't know if you want me to talk about that, John, or...
Yeah.
Okay. So, Kyle and his team have done a huge job of getting back all of the devices, and they are coming back. And there's some two or three days that are coming up next week, I believe, that all the devices are meant to be returned, that they're refurbishing, getting ready to go. Some will be sent back out, some will be kept for us to use. And then there are a whole lot of brand-new devices that have been purchased as well. And so, we're working on the method for the distribution of these devices to every child in every family, along with classroom materials. And Carla Malatia from the IMC has been working diligently to prepare materials that can be taken, can be sent home. And those will be distributed to teachers' classrooms and so that they can put those in little bags and get those ready to go along with the device, to go home with the child when the family comes to pick up the device, as well as we've asked all the schools to put in an order for materials that they won't have to pay for, that we're paying for, so that anything that a student needs to have, to be able to work successfully at home in addition to the device and the textbooks and the classroom stuff, they'll have. And so, all of that is going to be compiled and put together and sent out the 17th and the 18th, or the 6th, the Monday and the Tuesday before school starts. Wednesday's the 19th, and so these will be scheduled on the Monday and the Tuesday prior to Wednesday. And so, there will be a schedule that goes out to each school site.
Can I ask you a question, Liz, real quick?
Sure.
Is it going to be one device per family or is it one device per student?
Per student.
Okay.
Per student. And each, and Kyle can say a lot more about this if you want more information, but each student will have their name on the device along with their password. All that information will be attached to the device. And so, they will pick up their device and then drive down the road a little bit. And then there'll be people standing there with, you know, bags of materials to hand out to them. So, it's going to be like Christmas in August.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
So, Liz, I'm thinking that, you know, this information right now, we have, you know, a certain number of people on the call tonight. So, they're hearing this, some of our parents and guardians. But even a summary of this, maybe Dr. Baker, in your next newsletter, because I think anxiety is people don't know. And even like, this is so exciting to me, and I would imagine it would be exciting to some of the parents as well to hear this, that we're really, you know, putting a lot of thought into this. You know, they're going to have a goody bag with all this stuff. So, even if we don't know all the details yet around the exact schedules, even just some information similar to the newsletters you're sending out to teachers and administrators, I think sort of regular communication with our parents as much as possible and family members would be helpful.
Right. Jorge says it's... He just texted me, "It's coming."
Yay. Okay, thank you.
He's on the panelists, not the panelists, the attendees. And so, he says, "Yeah, it's coming." So, he's been, I guess, working with Liz and whoever.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you, that's great, that's great.
For the parent piece.
So John, I just have one more thing to add. So, so we are starting also the, the series of webinars for parents. And there is a special ed webinar that's being planned that will be on, I wrote it down, on August 13th in English, I believe, and then August 20th in Spanish, from 6:00 to 8:30. And I believe we talked about this last time as well, that this is when the team that works with Dr. Polino is going to be talking about the promising practices that they experienced over the summer in distance learning. And so she's, was working today with the team and they're preparing those presentations where they'll be talking about what they've learned and what was very successful with the students that were in the different programs. I think there's representatives from each of the programs that had a summer program to talk about their successes. And so I think that, that should be very interesting to families and also answer a lot of their questions in terms of how their children with IEPs will be served.
Good, very good. The other thing is, when you read, when you read the newsletter, you'll notice in the newsletter something that we talked about with the principals too, the other day was, some of our teachers have requested to use their classrooms for distance learning. And so that is going to be an option if they so desire. We have to follow, you know, the protocols and so forth. But that will be an option for any teacher who so desires to use a classroom at this point in time. So just that you're aware of that, because many of them have asked us already. Because they have all their materials there. Not only, you know, do they have the use of the whiteboard that's in the classroom, but some have dock cameras, others have their monitors that they want to be possibly used. And if they use their monitors, some of them have requested, you know, like a small little camera that goes on the monitor, which we will get them, if that's something that they so desire. And then another piece is HR that's been working on some other items.
Can I add a question real quick? Because there's a question in the chat that I think was relevant to what Liz was talking about, regarding the hotspots and what the bandwidth is of those. And I think Kyle can answer that, but I know that he told me recently that our districts had unlimited bandwidth, which was not the case for the high school district.
Right, we did have unlimited down. We, we do have.
Yeah.
Yes. That is correct. And we, I will report on something another time after another meeting with another organization takes place before I say anything about Wi-Fi.
I was going to ask about that.
You, yeah, right.
Well, I, I think it's fair to say that Dr. Baker and Kyle and others are working really hard to figure out Wi-Fi so that all of our students and families will have Wi-Fi, right? I think we can say that without.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so we're working hard, so hopefully we'll have good news, what, in a few weeks or something?
Their next meeting, Dennis Polly knows when the next meeting is. It's coming up in.
Okay, anyway, anyway, just, I know you're working hard on it. So we, we appreciate all the work you're doing there.
Yeah, thank you. So Wendy, why don't you talk about HR and then other items, especially things that took place today?
Hey, well do, nice to see everybody. So it's been really great having Liz on board with Linda's support. There's so much strength happening in ed services. And I've been really focusing on classified supports and a variety of things I'm going to report upon now. So one thing that has been really successful, we've had a few classified webinars. In fact, another one is tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, just to really get our classified staff up to speed, to answer questions. I'm reporting out of the board meeting from the night prior to make sure that our classified staff has up-to-date information to focus on regarding health, safety, returning to work, leaves, you know, very specific questions to very broad questions. And so that's been a nice Q and A open session. We've had 100 people on the line, 150 people on the line. So it's been really great to be able to reach out. And I appreciate people that even are not working, calling in and being part of that process. One thing that we are, that I was working on today actually, was food service. So food service distribution, Patricia Coria and Anna Legu, Priscilla was on the line. We're trying to brainstorm creative ways to allow families to have more access to food. And part of that starts actually with the registration process, as you know, filling out the free and reduced lunch form. So we really want families to take advantage of that and making sure that they are filling out and completing the form. So we increased the number of people at the district office to assist with registration and back-to-school packets and actually also lengthening the time that our support will be there, Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And so with that, we're hoping to really capture families that, that might need support. And on the food service call today was great, because, you know, it's just an amazing staff we have. It really is, when you get all these minds together and brainstorm these creative solutions. So we recognize that when we're participating in full-distance learning, we don't have the bus-driving situations that we typically have, where the bus drivers are picking up students and dropping them off at sites. And so we thought, wow, what a creative idea to actually drop food at different locations so that families have more access around the district. And so we were brainstorming that idea and utilizing the bus drivers and the food service support staff to find a way to increase access to families. And so we're excited that we can move that forward. Martin Cervantes was on the call representing the bus drivers. And it was really great to, to brainstorm those things together. And then the librarians don't know this, but we think it would be a great idea, maybe even to do book distribution that way too. So we're starting to think outside the box in some non-conventional ways to take advantage of some of these unique opportunities we have. That was something that happened today. On Monday, Liz referenced the professional development that is coming up soon. So an MOU was signed with RCTA, we thank them for that. We really want to make sure we have strong professional development for our teachers. And so the negotiations team from RCTA and I met and we finalized the MOU on Monday. So that's going into effect. And because of the short notice, it's allowing for flexibility, because we'll be recording these sessions that teachers, for some reason, they have childcare, some concern, they can watch it outside of their regular workday and still take advantage of the per diem stipend in the P, or the PGUC credit and take advantage, of course, of professional development. So we wanted to just make sure, because of the short notice, that people were able to engage properly. And then, oh, hi Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, can you remind us on the professional development days, how many there are and just in brief, kind of the sessions? I know you mentioned it before and kind of preliminary planning stages.
I'm happy to speak about the dates, but Liz is spearheading the content, so I'll, I'll turn that over to her. But we are moving the new teacher orientation to Monday, August 10th. And I'll send you a full schedule. Well, Liz can maybe support that along, if you don't mind Liz, with the details. But Monday, August 10th, new teacher orientation. And then Tuesday, the 11th, 12th and 13th are professional development for everybody, all teachers. And then the 14th is an uninterrupted workday that teachers have on their own. And then that following week, Monday and Tuesday, are designated for staff, site trainings and district trainings as well. And then, of course, there's an HR component to that, the required online trainings that are embedded in that time period. And then we start back with students on Wednesday, so we jump right in. Okay, so moving ahead, we are also working very closely with facilities on preparing campuses for people returning to them, should they wish, and certainly on a staggered schedule and in a very careful, systematic way. And so information is coming out to staff this week about, we're calling it the Return to Work Guide for those that work at school sites. And the recommendation has been those that need to be there to assist the public and so forth. For example, office staff or administrators are on a staggered schedule and their workspaces are set up appropriately with assistance from our custodian, our lead custodians that will be working during the day. And so information about temperature taking and a wellness screening each day that every employee will need to fill out, whether they're working remotely or not, to ensure that we give them the support they need, should they have symptoms and so forth. So all of those technical things are being put into a guide for returning to work for all, all the employees that will be at sites. And, and reminding them, of course, of all the health protocols and the details surrounding that so that when they return, they're doing that in a very safe way. Luckily, we opened up the district office early and it was a nice experiment to see how this works in, in reality, how we are ensuring that we have custodial support, that things are being cleaned off and high-touch surfaces and restrooms, making sure everyone's wearing their mask, I was there today. People are doing a great job with that. And we stagger the district office, so we just have a lot fewer people there for, one, interactions, face-to-face, but also just space and so forth. And then we have also started to master the way we manage the public coming into the district office, because that will also be a reality at school sites for parents that need support. So we put those things in place. We want to make sure we're modeling that well and work out some of the kinks as we know it so that when we are bringing much more people back on school sites that we have all that, you know, underway.
Wendy, did you want to talk about the parents that have been coming in to register and give information and so forth?
Sure. So currently, Kyle's department is spearheading registration and the back-to-school forms that are needed. I mentioned earlier the food service forms. And so the facilities department set up this really nice area in the parking lot where people are spaced out properly and multiple people are out there to assist. So we really increased the personnel that are assisting with registration, especially during this time. But we think it's a good model for the future, by the way. And while we still have some lines, we're really addressing the needs of people as they're coming in and answering a lot of questions. We also have a greeter who's assisting the public that can field questions and make appointments if needed. So I think we've increased our customer service in that regard, it feels good. Did I leave anything out, John, on that?
Everybody is following, you know.
Everyone's following it. We actually, Martin, great placards on the ground, about six feet, there's signs everywhere.
Masks.
Masks. And temperature taking, the public has to have their temperature taken as well. So we're, we're managing that. And then another item I wanted to note is that we are continuing our negotiations with the unions, actually tomorrow and Friday. We meet with RCTA tomorrow and CSEA on Friday. So we're looking at ways to support our union staff in that regard and determine what they feel is most important for us to prioritize as we move forward with the MOU. So I'm pleased with the collaborative relationships that we have with them. So I'll, I'll give you more information as we progress forward with the MOUs. And then last, tomorrow night, Antonio and I separately are hosting an independent study, homeschooling conversation with parents that are interested in learning about those options. So we really, at this moment in time, have three choices for parents. Distance learning, of course, which is for all right now. And there are two other options that, that I will be talking about on Thursday evening at 4:30. And that is information regarding independent study. We've traditionally had independent study in our district for many, many, many years. It's in board policy. But traditionally, it's, it's used when somebody's on a short vacation or there's an extended illness or something. But we're looking at ways that families might want to know about information on independent study, which would require a lot of parent oversight at home and not as much direct contact with the teacher as you typically would in a full-distance learning environment. But it does allow for some flexibility for the family if it's needed. So I'll be going into detail about that. And then the homeschool option is another option. Homeschool is something available in California, of course. We are not sponsoring that in our district, so it would be something where a parent would need to un-enroll and depart our district for at least the time period that they would want to homeschool their child and then they're able to return at a future date and enroll again. So that's the conversation. I want to just educate parents a little bit more about those two options, if that's something they're interested in. But of course, everyone will be enrolled in full-distance learning at this point, as the default, of course. Let's see. And, oh, one more item, we're fine-tuning and talking to the librarians about the priorities moving forward, as you know, in their job description. Librarians have been really providing a great service for kids with Read Alouds in the spring. And we're highlighting the need for book distribution and embracing the literacy skill portions of their job description as priorities, as you know, moving forward. So Kyle and I were discussing that today and how we can give principals some guidance on how they can set up their libraries for these unique type of pathways, focusing on those two items. And so Liz will be focusing on the training for librarians as we move into August to get, give them the support that they need. And I think that concludes my portion, John, unless there was something else.
There was one on the, the policy, the policy you want to discuss.
We can speak to that now, sure, that's fine. Is this a good time, Janet, then?
Actually, I'm sorry, before you jump into that, we, we had a couple of questions on the independent study that are coming to the panelists. And I did send the link to one of the parents, but the other one was asking if there'll be a video conversation that we could share for those who cannot make that session tomorrow? Because I guess there's some interested people who cannot make it. So is that something we could put on the website or send out to people?
Could we record it?
Right. And you know, what's interesting is, I'm going over a lot of information tomorrow, but I've also, I've had multiple people email me as well. And I'm more than happy to have a phone sometimes. It's a lot about clarifying what these things are and talking it through for their individual situation. So I'd be happy to put my email address in the chat and people can reach out to me that way as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
After the session, we will be asking for a commitment from, from people so we can start planning at some point soon thereafter. So I would want to make those calls relatively quickly. All right, should we segue to the distance learning then?
Please.
Okay.
Sorry, are you, is that 10.5 that you're?
So I wanted.
Well, because if we move on to 10.5, we can't, I don't think we can circle back and ask more questions. We have a speaker's card on this item. So we can take that now unless, unless the board had more questions or comments?
I, I had a couple more things, but why don't we take the comment card? I just had a couple of things I wanted to ask about.
Okay.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, so it's Megan O'Reilly Green, and you'll have two minutes. I do, Kyle, I've got my timer, if you want me to share my screen for that again?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Oh, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi, I'm Megan O'Reilly Green. I'm the PTO co-president at Orion Alternative School. And I just wanted to share for anybody that is looking for solutions for childcare or helping their communities come together with options for distance learning supervision, pods, or mini microschools, as some people are calling it. We've developed a lot of resources for parents. We've developed some surveys to understand what the needs and wants of the community are to help parents find matches. And, you know, we've developed a lot of other resources like liability waivers and behavioral expectations for students that are participating and also for parents. So if anybody would like more information about this, I've shared it with all of your, the heads of the PTOs of all the school and some of the leaders at the Bayside schools, the community schools as well. But if anybody wants more information, I just want to tell you my email address so you can email me for more information. So I'm going to tell you my email address right now. It's my name, which is Megan, that's M-E-G-H-A-N dot O'Reilly Green. That's O-R-E-I-L-L-Y, green like the color at gmail dot com. So if anybody wants more information about how to support their community in doing this, then just, just email me and I'll, I'll share all the resources that we've developed. Thank you guys so much for your time. I know this is so difficult, but I think everyone's doing a great job.
Megan, is it okay if I put your email in the chat also?
Oh, yes, please, absolutely, yeah, thanks.
Go ahead and do that, thank you.
Okay.
So, so we, before we move on to the policy then, can I just, there was a couple of things, and I'm sorry if you covered this already. I don't think you did, but I was listening, but I was checking chat a couple of times just to stay with that. So I know we've been getting some questions on childcare and I don't know that we covered that tonight. So I think one of the questions we're getting is, you know, are we going to be doing it for everybody or just for some kids? I think we need to just clarify, you know, who we're working at this point to try to get childcare for. It's not really childcare, it's after-school care, we're working.
So you're breaking up, can you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Um so basically, it's around the after school care childcare question. If somebody could speak to that just a little bit, kind of the update.
So the update, did you say the update on childcare? Is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you know, Patti is working with a um committee on the childcare piece. And something that we're working on right now, especially on the on the on the Bayside, is working with um the Boys and Girls Club. And to see how the Boys and Girls Club can assist with additional support for our students. Those students definitely had uh been Boys and Girls Club participation the last few years because your Boys and Girls Club has been with us for quite a while. The piece that Peter Ford, and now he has a a new uh chief uh kind of academic officer that I'm meeting with next week, they're trying to hire more stuff to meet the needs of those students at the Bayside. There is a problematic piece here, though. He's having uh his staff uh then having concerns about working face to face with people. So with that being said, he said he's gonna try as hard as he can. I'm working um to informing Patti and to see if he can hire more mentors to work with our kids. With that being said, able to be in a nature of where they can meet person to person, because as I told Peter, what we would allow him to do, utilize our classrooms that were not being utilized by, you know, by any of the teachers, you know, teachers that are not going to use a classroom for distance learning, he could utilize them to work, for his mentors to work with kids, which he thought was great. He would like to take advantage of that. But he says, my one concern is that I'm also having culty with people wanting to work in like a classroom with, you know, a group of children. So um that's that's the Bayside. I know that um we got a, we did get an email from one of our childcare providers on the other side of Redwood City at one of two of our other schools that was very concerned about um childcare and was thinking they were not going to be able to do that. And and that I sent to this person, you all got a copy of it. I said, that's that's not true. You're able to buy the space that you're renting for childcare. You just must follow the county guidelines in doing so. And I haven't heard from the person, so I think that was sufficient. There were some other childcare people outside entities that are approaching the classrooms if they're not being used. And I said, it all depends school site by school site if the classroom's not being used. Again, um they would have to go through the paperwork that we have in the business office, follow the guidelines, have insurance that's necessary to have uh childcare, and then, you know, pay that rental fee. And so there are some entities that are interested in doing that. And then you just heard about um, and I don't know if this was on your call today with other board members at, when you have those those weekly calls, there's the County Office of Education is looking into um what's happening here in San Francisco, the hub, the pods, or whatever they're calling them. They're also looking into that to see how they can help districts on the county within San Mateo County.
So kind of these learning centers that that people could go to, right? Tutors and that sort of thing, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, so I guess if we're getting if. Yeah, so if parents or guardians have que- questions, I mean, I think for the most part, we're focused in on the families that traditionally have had state funded after school program provided, like the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, the City Reach. And then in addition to that, there are some paid after school childcare spots that have been, I know at Clifford and Roy Cloud and some of the other sites. So I suppose what parents and families should do is probably check in with their site. And I I I think there was some hope that there would be broad scale, but I I don't think that's coming. And so that's why, you know, Megan just talked about the other thing are these social pods that families are sort of helping each other. So I just want to clarify that because I did see a couple of them on the meeting tonight that have been asking about this. And I know they all talk to each other, so I think word will get out, but um.
And there is a, there there is a group that, you know, that that group that that Patti meets with is a group that represents, you know, Redwood City specifically. And um any providers that we have always had um a good relation with and have worked with us. And then each, some of the school sites, as you did say, um Cloud and Clifford have Neighborhood Kids Center, I think that's what it's called. And then we also have, um, I forget who's at Roosevelt, um Kids Corner, or I I can't remember. There was, they're also a group there. And then Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec is another big entity, and I know Patti's working with them. So um if it were to come to fruition with the hubs or whatever that San Mateo County is also trying to assist with, what I'm going to be giving the the county superintendent is the number of room spaces we would have available once I I get that number from the principals. And that's dependent upon, again, those, because there are teachers that want to use their classroom during distance learning.
That sounds good. And I think are those, um, because another question we've been asking is, will there be, you know, extra tutors, kind of these drop in centers? So it sounds like the San Mateo County Office of Ed is looking into it.
Correct.
And then we do have some of our partners, right, that we've worked with for years, Reading Partners and Healthy Cities Tutoring. So will they be operating via Zoom?
Uh, they would not, they would, they would need to operate these of these Zoom. I'm sure that they're not.
Google Hangout or whatever, yeah. Okay.
Sure they're not.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, because I just know those were a couple of other questions that were coming up.
Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, so I had a couple of comments and a couple of questions. First off, I want to thank everybody. I'm very pleased. I I know everybody's been working incredibly hard and it feels like we're starting to close in, um which is great because, you know, we know that uh there's anxiety with teachers, staff, parents and students. So the more we do, the better. So thank you very much. I'm very pleased to see we're focused on social emotional learning and accountability, again, and scheduling, because I think that'll help uh parents. Um my questions are, I I know this can move because because you have a Herculean task, but what's kind of your date you're trying to kind of lock everything in by?
That is a good question. So the teachers are definitely, as Wendy spoke about the MOU, and you have that in that newsletter, the date that they're coming back to start their professional development. So we are hoping that, and let me just pull up my calendar real quick. So definitely the teachers are coming back, if I'm not mistaken, Liz, the tenth, the eleventh and the twelfth. So I'm hoping on that twelfth, we'll have it pretty well cemented, what it's going to look like when we start sending it out. You will get it on that board meeting, but I had a conversation with Liz earlier and I was, we're talking if we could get it pretty well cemented uh on the tenth and the eleventh, we can start pushing it out. Because what will occur is that this will be a major agenda item for us on the twelfth. You will have um the majority of the information with some maybe tweaks that will be coming. So we'll probably give that to you on Monday. The board memo will be there, but then on Monday, you'll get the final pieces. Uh and then that's when it's open to the public also, once it gets on on the agenda. So I'm hoping no later than, you know, uh Monday, the tenth or the ele- or Tuesday, the eleventh with the with the specifics. And then that's when we go, okay, uh go ahead, Jeff, Liz.
Oh, I was just gonna say, so the um the tenth is the day the new teachers come back and the eleventh is the day the whole staff comes back. And you're making me think that maybe we want to think a little bit differently about that day and provide more time for the staff to meet with the principal to talk about the schedule. Right? And so we we were gonna have um professional development. We have three days for that, but we can talk and we can talk with the with the team about if if that's going to be the the goal is to have the schedule done by the end of that day, we want to give them the opportunity to have their input and have the time for that conversation. So we can, we can work out.
I think I think that would be helpful because that way um parents will see it also. The board will have it and then it's it's uploaded. So so everyone will have it. And then we can have a healthy discussion that evening on it. Now, knowing that there's going to be probably quite a few questions on it, so what we're going to, what I'm going to ask again is to make sure that those questions come on on the Google Doc and so forth, so that we can possibly get them ahead of time, so we prepare, be be prepared to to answer them. And 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 then we can, you know, um we'll move forward. But then I also want people to understand that as we move into it and start, there's gonna be some tweaks. There's gonna be some tweaks, I'm sure. There are gonna be tweaks. And we'll just have to, you know, um uh be aware of it and then we'll we'll definitely inform our parents of what the tweaks are and why, why it happened that way.
Yeah, I I didn't mean to imply everything would be final. I I think we're gonna all have to be flexible and fluid.
Yeah.
The last, the last question is for Wendy and Food Services. I I know the federal government made concessions and allowed us to um provide um meals for our students um past when they normally do and um we could, you know, have drive by. And I know there's a date coming up where that ends. So um what's gonna happen when that date comes? Because the federal government has not communicated that they're gonna extend it.
Wendy, you're muted.
Thank you. Food Service is planning for a typical year of food distribution, but looking at it in a different way. So this, the food distribution that we experienced over the summer where families would drive in and pick up food is still applicable and will still be in that same type of venue um at the kitchens that will be designated. So so right now, Food Services is determining which kitchens would best be suited to be open. And then, and then on top of that, we have this additional piece where we're brainstorming about the food distribution through the buses to just allow for more access. So I hope that answered your question, I think.
Dennis, are you asking about, are you asking about the waiver? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It hasn't come, it hasn't come through yet. It hasn't come through through the feds. So in talking to Priscilla and to uh Anna Alagoo and Patricia, we said that we wanted to definitely get the parents to fill out the application. And I know a lot of parents that were at the district office today filling out their 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 other paperwork were also filling out the application for uh the free and reduced lunch. Um the sooner we get those in, the better it is for us because what, and 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 um Priscilla, if I'm not correct, let me know, because what I heard was we're at this point in time, because there is no waiver, we're gonna have to ask for the child's name and and the school and then try and match it up if I'm not incorrect. Priscilla? You're you're muted.
Okay. Yes, John, that is correct. We have to get the names now. It's different from the seamless summer where we can just provide meals to e- anyone. Now it's different. We're back to where, you know, the regular way of reporting meals and that would be just for students with their student ID. That's how we're tracking them and that's how we're reporting them. So it would be different.
So Dennis, does that answer your question?
Yes.
I think you may be gonna have another one right after it. What happens if they don't fill out the application? That's, that, that is 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 a very good question. So um what we do in the, what we've always been doing is, you know, we do not allow any student to go hungry, so we feed them. And then, you know, we try to ask for the dollars uh throughout the year and many times families can't pay for it. So it's up to the district to pay for it.
Thank you. Uh so two really quick things. Uh one, again, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to uh Dr. Baker and your staff. You guys have worked so hard and done amazing things. And I was trying to practice good Zoom habits and I couldn't unmute my uh screen fast enough to thank Ma- Megan O'Reilly Green. Uh she's been working tirelessly on all these things. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that um we really, really appreciate um all she's doing for students and families. And that's all I have. Thank you.
So Wendy, you still have the, Wendy needs to finish up on the the policy, right? Is that what we're gonna go to next, Jim?
Right. So i- if there's no other board comments or questions.
Uh I just want to say a quick thank you as well, Dennis. Thank you for saying that because it's it's really impressive. I mean, how quickly all of this is coming together. And I know it's frustrating for a lot of the parents and families and staff, and it feels like it's not fast enough, but really, this is extraordinary. So thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And so just for the audience who joined us after the fact, I just want to clarify that um during the changes to the board agenda, we moved item ten point five to um just below the eight point one discussion so that we can discuss the board policy on um distance teaching and learning. So we'll move into ten point five now.
Okay, thank you. So thank you to Alisa and Janet that sit on the Board Policy Committee. This was a item that we brought over the last couple of weeks and reviewed so that we could make sure we have it um in a timely fashion before we start with school coming back. So there is a board policy being brought to you tonight. Um we do not have ARs to go with it. It's strictly the board policy. But essentially, the gist of it is that there, this document really describes the fact that the district can work in this type of environment and offer a variety of different options for uh parents to consider the independent study being one of them, other enrichment courses, but obviously core classes certainly um in times of widespread illness, natural disaster, et cetera. And so with this information, as outlined in the board policy, there are, there's a variety of ways in which instruction can be delivered to students, including video, written instruction, ensuring that there's live or pre-recorded video, other types of lessons available. Uh and that feedback will be given properly from the teachers and in a timely manner as well, so that that will assist with student progress. And we also want to make sure that the board policy aligns that where the teachers are using the appropriate curriculum supports and um that we are able to pivot in different, you know, if we need to go back to hybrid learning and then quickly go back to full distance learning, that we have that in place already and a plan in place, which we do. So that's great. And making sure that we're also addressing the students' social emotional wellness uh in this board policy by having support staff and teachers, really all hands on deck in uh for people at the school side and at the district office to support students in that effort. So check ins, regular check ins, ensuring that they have a minimum, all of the technology supports needed, but certainly the mental health supports as well as we go in this difficult time. Uh we also want to make sure that there's equity, so addressing the fact that we are noticing that a variety of different students that might need extra support can get that extra support. So that's part of that reach outreach to families and identifying stu- students on a um on a quick, in a quick manner to make sure that they're getting what they need. Um and then it also addresses teacher communication, the regular communication to students and parents. Uh and including that is grading, feedback, uh making sure that there's assignments and assessments. So very different than what we did last spring, which is one reason why I'm bringing this to you, is to make sure that we have this in place and it's clear to everybody. And so, of course, this information will be sent out to those that um need to know this information, teachers, administrators, et cetera. So I'm bringing it to you tonight for a discussion and approval because um we are moving ahead in this manner. So thank you.
There any comments or questions from the board? Go ahead.
I I really liked it. I I thought it hit all the important things and I really liked the equity focus. So thank you very much to uh the board members and to Wendy and Linda for all your work on this.
Cecilia or Lisa, do you have any questions or comments? None? No, no, okay.
I really like it as well.
Thank you, Wendy, for bringing this to us. It is an action item, so we would need a motion to approve.
So moved?
Alisa and Cecilia, can we have a roll call vote, please?
McBride?
Aye.
Jiski Marcus?
Aye.
trustee Diaz-Lokum? Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
So we're moving on to um consent items. We need a motion to approve. We need a motion to approve.
Tomo?
Cecilia?
Second.
Alisa, thank you, a roll call vote.
Tristina McBride?
Aye.
Tristina Marcus?
Aye.
Tristina Slocum? Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Okay, so, sorry, I should have mentioned that that also included 10.3 and 10.4. We are moving on to 10.1, the Newton's area boundaries.
Okay, so, as you know, we've been having the pleasure of looking at boundaries for the last few weeks, and I want to thank all the board members who have partaken in this endeavor. So the final map that you have before you tonight is a good balance of considering the geographic makeup of our district, roads, highways, neighborhoods, et cetera, our facilities, the capacity, and the distance to the next closest neighborhood school, feedback from our community, which includes current parents, staff, and community members. The board requested several changes after listening to the community, and I appreciate the board for doing so. Under-school integration. During the school board's very first meeting on this item, we heard loud and clear from our community that the board needed to consider diversity when creating the new attendance zones for our neighborhood schools. Several of our current parents, who are very engaged in the district, asked us to consider socioeconomic diversity. Let's remember that these are our parents who celebrate our successes with us, but also support us during our challenges. Our parents are asking for this. In the Bay Area, diversity also means language spoken at home. Our students speak more than 35 different languages. The new maps represent our efforts at creating neighborhoods that will promote school integration that includes both by geographic areas or leaving seats open for the school of choice process. I recommend that the decision you make tonight take effect this coming school year for new families registering for the 21-22 school year. Registration for 21-22 may take place this coming October or November, depending on the process to update the system with the addresses in their new neighborhood schools. Current Redwood City School District families who would like to move to their new neighborhood school may do so by registering at their new neighborhood school for the 21-22 school year. If current families would like to move to a new school this coming school year in 2021, we have the schools of choice process to help them with that. This is why it is important that we be very specific that this takes effect for the 21-22 registration. As we discussed early on, if current families would like to stay at their current school, regardless of their new assigned neighborhood school, I recommend that you approve allowing them to stay. Questions?
So we have two comment cards on this. And I'm actually not sure the first comment card is even here. But I did want to clarify with Zach before we go forward. Map three would go, move those two blocks on Alameda and that one block on Jefferson back to where they were, where I was trying to clean things up. Is that correct?
Yeah, I shared a one-pager with, I believe Jorge forwarded it to the trustees. I shared a one-pager on Monday morning with an updated PDF of the map, and the new boundaries are in the system, and we'll share a school locator while we're in, assuming the trustees approve it, but yes, there's that little foot, essentially, I don't know what else to call it, of Roosevelt that's moving to Henry Ford, and those small half-blocks around the Alameda and Jefferson that were part of Roy Cloud, Clifford, and Roosevelt that are being, that were moved. And other than that scenario three, the final scenario was scenario three, other than those three changes.
Okay, thank you. Just because it was a PDF, I couldn't zoom in just to see if that had changed.
Sure.
Do we want to take comment cards right now, or, yeah? Okay, so our first speaker is Selena Holder, whose name I have not seen in there. So Selena, if you're here, can you raise your hand or let us know? This card came in several days ago. And if not, we have Kitty Aguilera. So Selena's card, just so the board knows, is in favor of scenario two. And then I'll go ahead and share my screen with the timer. So Kyle, do you have Selena, or is it, okay, we have Kitty. Okay, so I'll go ahead and share my screen, Kitty, you've got two minutes, and I'll start that timer in just a second.
Okay, thank you, just confirm you can hear me.
All right, go ahead, when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So my family and I live in the Hampton Oaks neighborhood of Redwood City, which is directly adjacent to Kenfield Common. We were previously zoned to attend Selby Lane, but due to school closures and changes to the choice schools, we no longer have a home school. We have two young children who will be enrolling in the district beginning the 21-22 school year. So I'm here to just implore you to vote for map three, which we sincerely appreciate you creating response to previous feedback. But both maps, one and two, would make Garfield our new neighborhood school, just to quickly reiterate some concerns that we expressed previously before adding new points. Garfield is very far away and hard to reach from our neighborhood. The drive at normal school drop-off and pickup times is difficult and would take over 20 minutes. Our kids would not be able to walk or ride their bikes safely to school, which requires crossing six lanes of traffic on El Camino and railroads to get to and from school each day. No walkability means more cars in the road and more traffic in this area, and having a school that's far from home means our children are not able to enjoy the friendships and the community that comes from hanging out with other kids from school, which is vitally important to their development. I was in attendance at the meeting last week and took note that most, if not all, of the individuals who spoke were community members who did not have their children enrolled in this district. They currently have them placed in private schools, and other individuals who don't have school-aged children. Most of these individuals spoke in favor of scenario two, because it would make their home school Roy Cloud. Please consider that parents already enrolled elsewhere will likely, highly unlikely disrupt their learning by switching into public schools, even if they are rezoned to Roy Cloud. It also appears from the Google sheet that the majority of people who are already at Henry Ford are in favor of scenario two as an upgrade, where those of us located in orphan region are simply asking to be given access to the school closest to our neighborhood, that will allow our communities to stay cohesive, our families to stay together, and our children safe passage to school. If Garfield is our school, our new school, we would likely have to move to private school, the curricular school, because we're giving other choice. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Kitty. Kyle, I still don't see the first speaker, do you?
No.
Okay, so that was it for comment cards. If the board would like to have any discussion on this, or comments?
Yeah, I would like to comment, since this is being recorded, and if people couldn't be here tonight, they can call it up. So I just wanted to acknowledge I've received a significant number of emails from people voting for scenario two and for scenario three. I've read them all, I've responded to probably all but five that came in late. I want to make sure people understand I heard you, and a lot of the people, you made it difficult and hard, which I think is good, because this is an important decision, so I think that's totally appropriate. At the end of the day, for me, I come down to the socioeconomic diversity of the district, and one person, or actually two people pointed out, that with schools of choice, if we get any diversity, it's kind of by luck. And so I think, once we get schools open and running and we master it, it's done probably out like in December-ish. I think we really should come back and look at having intentional diversity for our schools of choice. So that's where I am. Thank you.
I just want to comment on that, Dennis, thank you. I really think it's important for us to look at diversity and equity in our schools of choice program. So I thank you for volunteering to come back in the following school year to help us work through that. Just kidding. Were there any other comments? Alisa, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and go. First of all, thank you very much, Dr. Baker and team, and Zach for all your work, and actually for Dennis and Janet for sitting on the committee. I really appreciate all that you did, and I know we've gotten a lot of public comments, I with you, Dennis, along with other board members. I've tried to respond to most of the emails I've gotten, I have read all of them, and certainly taken into consideration. I feel like this is democracy in action, this is how it's supposed to happen, that, you know, everybody who wants to comment and be engaged and have passion and excitement around the issue has had an opportunity to voice those concerns and ideas with us at our meetings and through emails and the comment cards, so thank you. I know that the recommendation, it makes a lot of people really happy. I mean, I think we did solve some really important issues around safety in particular, and I'm really happy that we thought about safety and the ease of walking and biking to school for those who want to do that. And we also did a good job, I think, keeping neighborhoods together, so where families are, you know, meeting each other on the streets and that sort of thing. For the most part, we tried to keep those as neighborhood schools going to the same neighborhood schools, so I think that was a really good fix, that we sort of tweaked some of those issues. And then just kind of some of the weird dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs and things like that, cleaning those up, and just making it easier for people to get to school who choose our district. And I know there were some, you know, some people in Woodside Hills and around Selby Lane that I think are disappointed with the scenario three. They really wanted to be zoned to Roy Cloud, and I just want to say that, you know, I hear you. I, you know, certainly thought a lot about how to make that work, so that everybody could get what they wanted. But I think at the end of the day, I agree with Dennis and Dr. Baker and things like Janet. Well, actually, we expressed it as a whole board, I think, during the last few meetings. And we've heard from community members who really care about equity and diversity and wanting a socioeconomic balance. And I do think our schools of choice is a way to get at that, because as we know, zip codes and neighborhoods don't always allow for that within a school district. So I just want to say thank you very much to the community at large. Thank you to our staff for working so hard. And I think this scenario three is a good map in terms of all the things that I just talked about and some of the things. Dr. Baker, thank you for your summary tonight, because I think you did a good job in the board memo, and also with what you said tonight in terms of sort of the why and the how that we got there. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Maria.
Go, thank you. I also wanted to thank everybody for their comments, like the rest of the board members. I also received a lot of emails, and I always read them thoroughly and make sure that I am listening carefully, and weigh it all, all the pros and cons and the comments, and it really helps me when I make my decisions. As my colleagues have stated, not everyone wants the same thing, which makes this a bit difficult. And I would really appreciate Janet and Dennis working out all the little changes that we had gotten feedback on that we could make. Also, as Alisa said, I really appreciated Dr. Baker's comments. And hopefully, we will come back and take a look at the schools of choice. For me personally, schools of choice has always been important, because I believe that parents need to have that choice. Even if tonight we don't approve the map that they were hoping for, there is still that mechanism that you can apply and hopefully go to the school that you want your children to go to. So with that, I'll wait for the rest.
Cecilia, did you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, so same here. I do agree with scenario three, and I too did get a lot of emails from a lot of community members. I do understand that everybody is going to be happy with the decision that the board takes. However, like, just concentrating with the Woodside Hills, for example. The reason why I took my decision, or made my decision with scenario three was, most of those parents are still, or not Redwood City, they're not Redwood City parents. So what are the chances that they will become Redwood City parents if they go to Roy Cloud, which that would be their choice, right? And again, it is a very hard decision to make. I believe that we do have a lot of happy people with the decision with scenario three, and I too agree with Dennis. Perhaps in the future, we can come up with an implementation to make a better school of choice process, so that we do get enough equity in all the schools as possible.
Thanks. I just wanted to make one comment, because it's something I just have been hearing recently, that some of the neighborhoods like Woodside Hills and the Selby Lane area that were asking to be zoned to Roy Cloud, were commenting that the board brought forward scenario one and two as recommendations. And I just want to clarify that scenario one and two were brought by Zach, who is our demographer, presenting those to the board, and we had our discussion. It's okay, Zach, they can't see you. So, you know, we had our discussion that night, and felt like they were, Zach did a great job, but there were some fixes that we wanted to look at. And so that's why I recommended having the subcommittee with two board members, which were Dennis and myself, and that's how scenario three came about. So it wasn't that the board recommended scenario one and two and then changed our mind. It was that that was the first time we had a chance to look at it together and have a discussion. So with all that said, I appreciate Zach, your patience, especially with me, and just being willing to answer all the questions and all the data points that we asked for, and, you know, all the time that the subcommittee put in. Dr. Baker and Jorge and Dennis. Thank you to all of the community that has, I mean, it's an important issue, and we've heard from a lot, a lot of our community in favor of multiple different maps. And I recognize that not everybody's going to be happy. But I hope that the community can understand that that as a board members, we're looking at many more perspectives than just the emails we get. There's a lot more that we have to consider. And so with that said, I would also be happy going forward with map three. It is an action item, so unless there's other questions or comments, we need a motion?
So moved.
Dennis?
Second.
Is that Maria?
Yes.
Okay, and can we have a roll call vote, please, Eliana?
Tristina McBride?
Aye.
Tristina Marcus?
Aye.
Tristina Slocum?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Thank you, Zach, thank you for all your work.
Excellent.
Sticking with us.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, so that brings us to our last item, because 10.3, 10.4, and 10.5 all moved earlier. 10.2 is the adoption of resolution two regarding teaching assignments.
Wendy, do you want to talk about that? I'm muted.
I think she's getting.
Sorry, I have to go through the meeting. So yes, I'm bringing this to you tonight, in advance, I have to say, which is really great. We're able to get a lot of work done in terms of looking at schedules and credentials, you know, for this coming year, and so I'm thrilled to bring it to you. So what we have here is a list of employees under 10.2 that are needing ed code options. This is a very typical HR function, where we are analyzing This is a very typical HR function where we are analyzing the courses that teachers will be teaching this coming fall. And ed code authorization allows for those that already hold a preliminary or clear credential and they're in full status to be considered to be teaching another course depending on the need of the site. And this could be simply a teacher teaching an extra period of sixth grade, if there's three sixth grade core classes in one school. And a core by definition would be, you know, the same group of children for two separate subjects. And so if we needed a teacher to teach a third subject or another language arts class, for example, we would put forward this ed code option for you to consider. And so all of the teachers here on the list are in great standing and many of them have had these ed code waivers in the past and have been successful, you know, as they progress forward in the evaluation process. So this is the list that we are bringing to you today that is ready to go. We are intending to bring you another one on August 12th. And those could also include elective subjects if we move in that direction as we did last August. So we're still working on that. But this is part one. Part two will come to likely August 12th before teachers start students in classes this year. Are there any questions?
Yeah, what's the cat's name?
For the audience, Wolf's cat has been climbing all over her computer.
So. First off, I know all the teachers that are on the list and they're all marvelous teachers. In the past, we've done a short snippet on their background and, you know, why we're okay with it. And, and I, and I didn't see that. And so I think if anybody was to pull that up, it, it would be helpful to know, like a lot of these teachers have been doing this already for multiple, multiple years. And so we're not just like switching somebody. So, so my recommendation would be next year, if you could just do that little snippet.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Typically, we do that for the provisional internship permit.
Right.
We haven't traditionally done it for the ed code option, but I'd be happy to put something in there.
Well, if it's not a lot of work, I just, I think the provisional one works really well because you can look at and say, wow, that person really is competent. And I think when you go down that list, you know, those are really good teachers and it would, I think it would give everybody more confidence that we're not just switching them from one topic to another kind of willy-nilly.
Right. Okay.
Which I know you don't do. I mean, I know there's a lot of thoughts. I don't mean it to sound like you did. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, we need a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Maria?
Second.
Dennis, thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chisita McBride?
First, thank you, Wendy, for getting this done early. And then I.
Chisita Marquez?
Aye.
Chisita Dias Locam?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Thank you, Wendy. Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to the end of our, what, 2019, 2020 school board meetings. So we have a week off and we'll see you back for the new school year on August 12th at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Oh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, everyone.
Bye.